Hey friends.
Surely did you get the bill for the elected signs in the post office?
He hasn't put those in yet.
Yeah, they're in.
Oh, did he didn't?
I haven't got my bills. I got the sirens on that day. And I have Joe's bill for the.
Oh, you got it here?
Well, I had a picture of it.
Okay.
And I called him, I didn't know he did that.
Awesome, okay.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, please be with the council tonight when they make their decisions. And please be with Jett so he can be covered. Treasure's report.
What was on the phone?
Treasure's report.
Should we do the minutes first?
Huh?
Should we do the minutes first?
Go and do the minutes first, is that what she's saying?
Yeah.
Can I do those first?
I don't care.
You guys work it out.
Alright, make it. The Powhatan City meeting came to order at seven P M. President Jackie Summers started the meeting with a pledge and prayer. By three council members by guests, President Jackie Summers, Treasurer, Shelley Dodge, and City Clerk Vicki Shute. Absent was Jim Foster and Shirley Ashton. Dale asked that she know video of himself and that the video needs to be turned off after the meeting. Shelley Dodge read the treasurer's report to the council. Dale also wanted to know why the waste units were high from last month. Dale would talk with Roland Keller and see if we could find out something and see where that might be the leak in town. Dale made a motion to accept the treasurer's report in spacey, sharp second of the motion. Motion carried forward to zero. Shelley Dodge also presented the Powhatan city budget and asked that the council go over it and will be, will have Facebook or feedback at the next meeting. Vicki Shute read the minutes from April meeting with some corrections. Vicki Shute will update the corrections and have them ready to sign at the next meeting. Tracy made a motion to approve the minutes and Sharon Willie seconded the motion. Motion carried forward to zero. Vicki Shute read correspondences from Powhatan Easter. Abe thanking them for the donation. Old business. Joel had been working at the post office. High Waka is managing the post office mouse problem and they will sign off. The post office needs two exit signs hung up. We contacted Carl Gaskell about installation. Tracy Sharp updated the city about the lagoon. Eddie Coretherens came to check on the must rats and found that they had, they had left. Who would not charge the city and we could check back on the issue in fall months. It will be suspended until then. Vicki Shute contacted the cemetery board and let them know that they can meet the shelter house and they'll charge. Horton Headlight published the Powhatan Resolution twenty five, twenty twenty five R two and we paid the bill. Dale and Vicki went around town to take pictures of properties and we'll get the order seventy four out later soon. Dale noticed that three blocks windows in the pump house had been broken and the, and found rocks and looks inside the building. Dale called the High Waka Police Department and they had a case number on this accident. With discussion, the council decided to have Dale contact Joe Williams to see if he'd be willing to replace the windows. Tracy Sharp made the motion to have Dale contact Joe and Sharon seconded the motion, carried forward to zero. Dale had motion that the new, noticed that the new muscle was not working, was going to call Carl Gaskell. After discussion on the price and parts, not knowing how much, Sharon Willie made a motion to let Dale, Dale have up to a thousand dollars on his judgment of price. Tracy seconded the motion, carried forward to zero.
I can say three zero both times.
Yeah. She carried, yeah.
Okay.
Dale also called, said that Carl Gaskell would be willing to work at the post office and putting up the exit sign. He said the price would be around a hundred and twenty in labor. Dale also called Carl to look at the office room and gave an estimate of fourteen fifty five oh four to clean up wiring and put into two to three outlets. The council decided to put that project on hold until next year. Streets, Dale and streets will be start sometime in late June. Jackie Summers on the parks, we've had several people using the shelter house for graduations. Jackie Summers wanted to see if Owen Jacobson could have alcohol at the park, or Powhatan classroom union in the park. Dale made the motion and Tracy seconded, carried forward to, or four to zero. We would like to thank Dale and Carol for cleaning Legion Hall. Devane Lloyd let the council know that they have gotten an estimate on the flooring and will be bringing it up at the Powhatan suffer. The council went into an executive meeting at seven forty nine at ten minutes. The council resumed at seven fifty nine and called to everyone to resume the meeting. Dale made a motion to adjourn meeting and Sharon Willie seconded the motion, motion carried forward to zero. Next meeting is due second at seven P M.
Are there any additions or corrections to the list?
I just had one that I, I called the Sheriff Department, resident of the High Waka.
Oh, okay.
And all those threes are supposed to be fours?
Yep, I know all those.
Do I hear a motion to accept them?
I'm motioning to accept them.
Seconded it. Motion's been made and seconded.
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, aye.
Did you send the minutes to?
No, those are passing them.
They have to approve them.
Oh, alright, the correct.
The only one we have.
Was I even here? I don't think I was here for that.
Oh, I don't know if I heard them.
You were sick, you were, you had to go.
I still have my surgery.
You should have a couple with your son. Um, December second, twenty twenty four minutes. Call to order at seven P M. Led to allegiance and prayer was led by Mayor Norwood Foster. Two councilors, um, absent Tracy Sharp due to being sick and Sharon Willie due to just having surgery. Present were Dale, Shirley, Jackie, Tammy, Kevin Williams, City Clerk, Michelle Dodge, Treasurer, and Mayor Norwood Foster. Guests, orderly colleague was the colleague of Devane. That should be Dennis Miller.
I couldn't read her name.
So, minutes of the last meeting were read by Tammy Williams, approved by council with corrections. There were four, four door legal size filing, file cabinets purchased in two thousand fifteen, but only two have been located, two are missing. Old business, Richard approved to put valve in. Furnace guy came and took measurements, so hopefully the following week the furnace will be replaced. Building committee has been discontinued. Mayor Norwood Foster thanked Michelle Dodge for the benches. Sharon Willie and Jackie Summers met with Sharon, helping with the Roger Wolf grant. Sarah was going to email the application for the grant to do, to do by January. Should know an answer by February for stump removal of twenty five hundred.
I've written, I've written the.
I'm still reading.
I don't know, you can.
Yes, I'm reading.
Yes, I'm just trying to make sure I'm reading. As far as CPA, Mayor Norwood Foster has talked to a couple of them, we'll get back to him by the first of the year. Dale seconded to a stump guy, four dollars to enter around, or around two hundred fifty to three hundred per stump, but with good discount on ten stumps. Ran exterminated, treated the four behind these. From the top drilled a hole down and treated the spaces eight foot. In five to seven days, should be done. Bob Hall called Dale, said the city insurance is the holdup, wanting the city to have a million dollar insurance policy. There was an electrical, electrical problem in the lean to east of the fire department. Becker was.
Breaker.
Breaker was bad, Barry Shute's got it reset. Barry Shute and Dale had been working on the dump truck, getting on the lane. Talked about moving the light switch and office and ceiling wires being hidden and talked about meeting room being improved, putting in enclosement around the furnace, giving some estimates. Treasurer's report read by Michelle, motion Dale seconded by Shirley, all approved. New business. The city asked Tracy Sharp if he would be interested in taking classes and become the water waste operator. The city would pay for the classes. Luke Pollock asked for the minutes for the special meeting under the furnace. Tammy Williams read them and they were approved from October sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Motion by Dale, seconded by Jackie, all approved. Endurant at seven forty eight P M. Motion by Dale, seconded by Jackie, all approved.
I never ended that really when I figured.
You were holding us up?
Yeah, I must have been holding this up.
Little long.
I don't remember now, I don't know.
She read February, it says March on there.
Oh, okay. They're not my minutes, so.
I didn't know, was it February or?
It was, didn't, we got, they didn't.
Do you want to have a motion to accept them?
You want?
Does December minutes, I make the motion accept the December minutes?
Were I'm meeting allowed to, we think we want here.
They'll never work through.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess.
You want theirs?
Yeah, you two want here.
I guess that means, if we're not allowed to, then I guess that leaves Shirley.
I'll make a motion, we accept the December.
No, Dale.
I said, I said, sorry.
Dale made the motion.
Yep.
Now I'll take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're telling me.
Okay, treasure report for May twenty, twenty twenty five. City Clerk Vicki got two thirty eight five. City Treasurer Michelle Dodge got two seventy seven oh five. The street lights was three hundred and eight, three hundred and thirty eight dollars and four cents. Legion Hall was sixty two fifty by bill. Um, Horton Headlight had paid the resolution forty seven thirty. Taxes, twenty five dollars. The L A O for the sire repair was two hundred and eleven seventy nine. Our balance in the general account is nineteen thousand, two hundred and twenty two dollars and thirty nine cents. Water, our waste water was a dollar and a hundred dollars. Water operator Roland, two hundred dollars. We also paid Roland to change the, repair the valve for a hundred dollars. Meter reader, a hundred dollars. The bar was twenty nine dollars for the lights. Uh, uh, pump house was sixty eight sixty three. Our water bill was nine hundred and seventy units, which was one thousand five hundred and fifty two dollars. Our debt, four hundred and thirty. We had stamps, which was a hundred and forty six dollars and our balance is thirty eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty one dollars and sixteen cents.
Do I have, carry addition corrections to the treasurer's report?
I don't, um, what's the, uh, eagle sundown valve repair, who's that?
That's Roland.
Oh, that's Roland.
Do I hear a motion to accept the treasurer's report? I make a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
I'll second it.
Is the move seconded? All in favor?
I have some correspondences here. Okay, so the first thing of correspondences, we got the pest control, the mice in the, um, post office that was signed off finally. The High Waka, um, post office is handling that now. Uh, let's see, what was this? This is the orc that built it around the, the base boards. He got that done, that was signed off. Uh, vestibule where the hole was up on the ceiling, that was taken care of. And then we have a couple of other ones here. So while he was trying to fix the ceiling, the wall started crumbling, which actually was fully aware that was probably going to be an issue. So we just need to hire somebody to do that. And she said taking the old down is what she wants and just putting up some old paneling and call it good. That's all she wants on that. Um, the wooden steps out here. Um, she's concerned with the older guy that gets the mail, that he's going to fall off of those steps. There is a crack at the very top of it, I noticed. Um, so we had some steps that are pampers, so Barry's going to fix those up and we're going to put railings on those for you to charge on that. So that will be taken care of. And. A water pipe was signed off and repainting, it says paint chipping all around the front upper body door. It says unknown type of paint or if it contains lead. But she said that she did not notice anything like that, so we just go on as painting it. So that will be taken care of as well for the post office. So she has, um, pictures of the wall in there, I took pictures of it. So as soon as we get that done, she'll sign off on all those three. And then I guess the, uh, exit lights, they're done, so she can sign off on those.
The one I saw, I didn't see the one on the inside, but above the doors there.
Okay, then she can sign off on those. Carl, okay, so Carl got that done and, oh, uh, Keith Williams got, we found the water leak. It was Keith Williams' house. Um, as I was coming to the post office, I noticed somebody was over there moving or in the house. So I stopped by, talked to his son. I did however, receive the bill back from when I sent it back in March. It took almost a month and I have to come back to me. But I do have an address that I, the daughter-in-law says he can't hear when the door, somebody knocks at the door. So he never heard it to sign off on it. So I gave him a copy of this and I also gave him the copy of the current bill that he owes.
What's that?
What?
How much is that?
That I do not know because I, I got the reading from Tracy yes, a couple days, yesterday. Yeah, yesterday, so I will check on that.
That'd be five hundred thousand gallons to do there.
So I will check on that and see what that is. But when she was here, I just, I gave her this, let her know there was a leak. And Luke Pollock may have known that it, there was a leak in there too, so we're covered there. Um, I do have a bill here from Good News Handyman Service, which is Joel, for two eighty eight forty and that was for the wood stain, all the stuff that was inside that he worked on. So that just needs to be.
For the post office?
Yes.
Okay, so that's done, everything's done in there?
Everything is done in there, we can sign off on that. We just need to, uh, bring that up a new business, so we can pay that one. Okay, excellent. I also have, um, the annual drinking water qual, quantum quality report. So when I do the bills next, I will copy these off and put it into everyone's water bill on that one. And then this should be, this will be under new business as well. A request for annual funding from Luke Pollock for the Powhatan Fire Department. So we can bring that up in new business. And we also need to go, uh, we can do this now, since this was old business for the, uh, budget update. So do you want to tell them kind of what you thought about, I mean? Okay, I don't know if everybody went through their stuff enough, but I'm going to try to, you can only up it so much percentage when you go to budget meetings, so. I'm going to up the, the contract labor because it's only twenty two hundred dollars and we're going to need more than that. We're going to have all this stuff done in the next year and stuff. Uh, the repair and maintenance is only twenty five in the post office and the new furnace pretty much took care of all that. So I'm going to up that. And the Legion building, I'm going to up that so that we can keep doing repairs and stuff. It's only six thousand dollars and that pretty much eats everything up and way everything's going up. Um, and streets is only fifty five hundred, so I'm going to up that because.
Twenty nine thousand.
Yeah, definitely upping that one. That was for general and for the water, um, the water purchase, I'm going to up it because it's only ten thousand right now. And the way we're going, it's going to be more than that. And postage, I'm going to up that because stamps keep going up. And repairs and maintenance, I'm going to up it, it's fifty five thousand, but if you buy a couple meters and a couple, uh, dills, you pretty much got that down to drain. And mowing, we definitely decided, we said two thousand dollars and if everybody's going to keep mowing, sharing, I don't know if I should just keep it at two thousand or if I should lower it or.
Well, I assume the co-op will still continue to help mow, but I don't know that.
So I should just keep it at two thousand just in case?
I would think.
Okay. I tried to get the corner for dawn when it's. And that's all I have. If there's anything else, if you guys went through this, if you want me to raise it or lower it, please let me know before June sixteenth.
What was the postage you had?
Uh, postage, they only got three hundred fifty bucks and that's only a couple.
And you said the mowing was two thousand?
Two thousand, yeah.
Okay.
Do you know how much you're upping them to? Uh, you can only up them a percentage, so I'm going to go the highest percentage I can, so.
Okay.
That's all the things that I have. If there's anything else, please let me know.
Was there any more questions for Shelley?
I'm sure I'm making motions wrong for, for.
We need a motion for increasing the budget.
Yeah, for increasing the budget, yes, and motion for reducing.
I'll say it.
Is the move motion and seconded?
Aye.
Aye.
Or there, is there any other additions?
On the water leak, I kind of want to bring the council up the speed. Roland was, uh, contacted, he could not find the water leak. If I drove around town, I could not see water leak, any water running or tumble grass or anything like that. So Roland recommended, I called the Kansas Rural Water Association. He gave you that number, somebody gave you the number. Anyway, I know that guy, long ago, so I talked to him, he came up, uh, one day, I don't know how much time this spent. They've got some listening device they use to try to find that, where that water's moving at. They had no luck, uh, so he came up the next day and we went around with him. He checked all the meters that, um, supposedly hadn't been read. Um, and all the ones that were supposed to be shut off. And he finally found it over at Keith's house. He found it by going down the alley and taking the manhole cover off and the salt water. He said, there's your leak. He checked Keith's here, and it was just a little red thing in there, just with a dot because it was spilling some out. And evidently some pump was pumping out fast enough. Anyway, that's where the water leak was at. Let's say we used nine hundred and seventy thousand gallons, which we normally use three sixty five or, I think three fifty and four hundred thousand, so. A lot, we used a lot of water, that's why it billed fifteen hundred percent. Uh, let's see.
Is that why the lagoons are full right now?
Because it's going right in the sewer. Yeah, going right down the sewer line.
I thought we explained last month though.
Yeah.
So next month, the water bill should have water, it should be back to, pretty much normal.
Well, it's still, I just got it today and it's still six oh five, but it's going down.
So was that, when did they read that?
See, I don't know when they read, they could have read it after you guys fixed it, so.
Before the six.
Yeah.
Oh, before.
Something like that.
You should see something that's. Yeah, because it was at nine seventy, now it's six oh five, so it's going down.
Yeah. They said it was running twenty two gallon mint when, when the leak was going on, when they started shutting down the seven gallon mint. Got much water, well, due to main heater. Uh, Joe Williams got the pump house fixed, got a bill, uh, took him three hours, twenty five dollars an hour. Plus, uh, Edelman, he got, we put in plexiglass rather than glass. So plexiglass, two tubes of co-op, which I've got one left, you didn't need to, you had a lot to. Edelman's bill was fifty two thirty five, so a hundred and twenty six dollars to replace those three pans of glass. I did call the school because co-op said they saw some kids up there with a teacher. Called and talked to the acting superintendent. He talked, he said he'd get back to me, I seen him up here at the pump house. He said he talked to the teacher who was there, she says her, her kids did not do that. And he said, I gotta, you know, I gotta believe what she says. I said, absolutely. So that's when I told, asked Joe if he would replace those, and he did. Also, the places of the sheriff's department requested that, when that was completed, that I let them know what the cost of that repair was, and so I did that a couple days ago, called and told them that the cost was a hundred and twenty six dollars possibly. Uh, when, when I replaced the sign over here, I didn't replace it, I repaired the sign with co-op. I did not, uh, had a bill for the material that was going in the hole. I didn't turn that in last month, so I have that to the end of the year. So as far as old business, I think that's all that I have. My home eagle was jealous of me.
Okay, just make it up to you?
Seventeen dollars, it's not good. Home stuff, that nut in the hole, it works pretty good.
I'll have it done by Friday.
Is there any other old businesses?
I don't know if this is old business, but we're going to do the streets. I think I mentioned it last, last about patching the streets, need cold patch. Barry and I will try to do that, we'll have to get some help, co-op guys or something, but, um, we're going to need cold patches. Quite a bit of patching to do on the north and south streets. So, um, last year Keller sold the cold patch for a hundred and five dollars a ton. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, we got three ton. We're going to need more than that. This year, we've got some of that left, but we're going to need more because there's more patching. They were going to charge three hundred dollars for delivery last year. Went and picked it up. Used, uh, Love's truck and trailer. But this year we're going to need more and I do not want to put more than that in the end of the trailer. So I think we need to have them delivered. Cost is the same, I have no idea, I have to check. Should be a whole lot more. What do you think we need, Barry, at least four ton?
Last one was three.
Last one was three.
Yeah.
I'd say at least four ton. So, does the council want me to call and order that? Try to get that done because they're coming in a couple weeks.
Yeah, weeks to be done.
Do the streets and we need to trim some trees because they need fourteen feet of clearance. So there's a little trimming to be done, if you have a list.
Yeah, I have a list of people, but I need to call to get vehicles off the street and to do some trimming on trees. So I want to hold everybody about the vehicles so they're kind of aware that they need to be off the streets so we can get the streets patched and done, well.
Can I have a motion for Dale and Barry? Can I have a motion for Dale and Barry to order the cold patch?
At least four ton, I don't know if four ton will do it, we'll do four ton, try to stretch it if that's okay, so. Four ton, that'd be four hundred and twenty dollars, if the price is the same, plus three hundred dollars of delivery, if it's the same. Seven hundred and twenty dollars, if everything's the same.
May I make a motion that we order the cold patch, so we can get the streets back in shape?
I'll second it.
It's the motion and seconded, has it what? Is there any, any more old business?
Okay, uh new business, um I'm gonna have Joel go around and spray the water with glue. And then also, I need to talk to city council to see about water meters that are in places that don't need water. So what was the purpose of just taking the meter out of Williams' house? Because they're still, they're probably gonna need to clean it, and need water? Or did Roland just take it and not ask?
No, that's in the back of my truck.
Roland, Roland told me that it would be better if the meter was in there, because if it's in there, then we have to charge the sewer charge, even if it's shut off, so.
Okay.
To say, so Williams, twelve dollars and fifty cents a month.
Yeah.
I think that's why he wanted the meter out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh I've got a question on that. Sean said that he wanted the meter out of the trailer that he owes.
Keith's, I mean, Keith wants it out?
And the house, that's what he wanted.
The house is out?
Okay.
Okay.
That's something that probably Joel would be able to do, take the meter out? Okay.
Okay, so I know um John, his property still has a meter in it, I know he took it out, John Summers. Um.
Has he wanted out?
He said all along, there's a meter in there.
Well, there is. Linda Whitehouse, there's one in, do we just take it out, or? She paid a little ten with it, that's right.
Right up next to you.
One lives next to Dale.
Oh.
That never sees the water for.
So is she still paying her sewer bill?
I don't ever send her any, once a year, she says.
Yeah, like she hasn't requested the meter be taken out?
No, she's never.
The only thing she's got, she's got a hydrant, but she's never really used it, so I don't know. I think unless she requests it, you gotta leave it in there.
And then keep charging.
I guess.
Okay, so the same thing is with Sharon. Now, does anybody know if the Freyer's garden and house meters are out by?
No idea.
Okay, we'll have to search to see if they're actually.
And they're getting charged?
Oh, they're, if they're getting charged, nobody's paying for it.
I guess Freyer's garden does not have a sewer connection, so.
No.
So they got two meters?
He got a garden meter.
Garden meter. Yeah, we're gonna have to likely search to get, they threw it, but I know, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure I know where it lives, both of those are. And what about Brad's? Does this meter still in there?
Let's see, did we?
Last time it was, I remember.
I think we found Brad's, it's in there, but it wasn't moving, I mean, because it was looking for leaks.
Yeah.
We never did find Freyers. As long as, yeah, he checked the, he checked the, the garden, let's see, he said, it wasn't moving or what, I can't remember.
Brad's, we have a lien on his taxes, so.
So does that keep occurring for?
Yeah, and it hasn't been like a bit.
Can we pull Brad's meter?
Well, I'm sending him a letter just asking about his yard, so I can pop that in there.
Ask him if he wants to be moved, so there's no charge.
Send Linda her bill again, tell her, ask her, she needs to request if she wants the meter still in, and keep paying the twelve dollars or not.
Yeah.
Just send this note in there saying, hey, do you still want your meter in there? Okay, so when was the last time she got a letter? Because I've never sent her a water bill or a letter or anything, so. Okay, so. And she paid, she paid in December for the whole year, and she hasn't paid you.
You have a certain address.
Twenty, yeah, so I've been to her for a while, because I've tried to buy the house, and she can barely move.
We'll give that to the victims if she can.
Is that that Dunbar? Okay, I think I have that one, okay. Um what about Sharon, Jan, is it Jan, Jan T, Jan? Jen?
Um yeah.
But lady.
Where's she at?
Uh Carl.
Carl.
Now, where's she at now, is she there?
I don't know, I don't know, she doesn't.
We are there.
She takes her dog out, that's about.
But she hasn't been there, because normally, you know, you can see her walking the dog.
I saw her one, I think, in the last two months.
Yeah.
Has she requested it taken out?
But she bears to pay the bill either.
She doesn't pay her bill?
Well, she has no water in her house, so the pipes under the house were all broken.
That's what I learned.
And then Roland fixed it or something. But she still has a meter in there, so she could have it or if she wanted it, because she hasn't ever requested to take it out. So I can ask her.
You have her address?
Oh, I, I get money from her for mowing, so I can ask, yeah. And Pecahoue White House, that still has a meter in it.
They pay?
I don't think they do pay for anything on that house, nothing, no.
Did you send them a bill?
I sent Pecahoue, yeah, for the the housing and then the grade school and high school.
Well, ask them if they want that taken out, otherwise it's twelve dollars and fifty cents a month. Whatever, twelve dollars for this.
Okay, and then I need to also have Joel replace, um yeah, Joe Torpleson's meter, because for the last year, twenty twenty four, he has only been getting charged a thousand gallons, there's something wrong with his meter, nobody seemed to fix it. So I've had Joel read it, and last month and this month were exactly the same number.
There's a change.
So there's a problem with that, I know he's gotta use more than a thousand gallons, because he does gardening, so that needs to be replaced, and then Sean Horton, I think, needs to be replaced as well, because that's not competing either.
That's something Joel will be able to do, I assume, I think.
Okay, so we just need, let's see. So I just need probably a motion for Joel to take out and replace Sean Horton's and Joel Torpleson's meters.
I make a motion that Joel replaced meters at Sean Horton's place and Joe Torpleson's place.